Driving around town with five dogs in the car, all of them barking at whoever was looking at us.
Two minutes, minute and a half.
Hey Dave, was Paul Sorvino, was he in The Godfather? He was in Goodfellas, I know. He just passed away yesterday, I think.
I don't think so. It might have been the only Italian American who wasn't, but.
You know, he made a bunch of gangster movies, though.
Oh, yeah, he was, he picked up on him in the, in the Good, in Goodfellas. And then also, obviously, when he was in Law and Order.
Yeah.
On the good guy, playing a cop, so.
I thought maybe you were wearing that shirt in his honor today or something, but.
No, I had it on yesterday, too, so. Before I heard it, the advantage was so big.
I thought it said The Godfather, but it says The Dogfather, okay.
You gotta honor your dogs, so. We have one thirteen-year-old, very dignified dog, and one eleven-month-old who's not yet dignified, so.
That's the one I met at the post office.
Oh, the one, he was in the car? Yeah.
Yeah.
Which arm did he rip off, so?
Only, only the left.
Okay, I guess it's.
Well, I think you're running this meeting today, Dave, not me.
Yes, sir. It's ten o'clock, called, called to order this workshop or work session for the Budget Committee. And talk over various issues. I don't remember the next days, the, the future work sessions, but we can get that before we end this particular meeting, write, write that down again. And the first is, issue or item on our agenda is to approve the City of Manzanita budget calendar. And I thought it's kind of interesting, looking at this, I realized, oh, this is all in two thousand twenty-three.
You do not have the current budget calendar.
Pardon?
You do not have the current one. I'm gonna share my screen.
Oh, okay.
And we will go over that.
So this says twenty-two, all right, okay. I, I stand corrected, yeah.
So the idea behind this is to kind of, it's quarterly, and after each, um, kind of after we get through the short-term rental taxes and the water billings, we want to go over all the revenue and kind of give an idea of where we are at. So start out today, the twenty-sixth, where we're gonna just review last year's stuff. And then October twenty-fifth would be the second one. January twenty-third, and then, oops. That's not supposed to be like that. Um. And then we kind of get into the budget pre-meeting stuff. Maybe that bothers me. So March twentieth will be the first one, April twenty-fourth will be the second. These will be subject to change a little bit as Leila and I map out next year's budget, and if we want to kind of make some adjustments. Um, so the main ones that we're really looking at today are the second and third quarterly. So I don't know if that works for everyone, if you guys like Tuesdays, if you like mornings. Certainly, it'll be hard to, you know, all agree on the same thing, but if anyone has any comments.
Yeah, well, we, we could probably, you know, put out a, about a month before, say, hey, this is when we're planning to do this. How's this work out for people? Because I checked my calendar, calendar, and I don't have any idea what's happening in October.
Most of us don't.
So anyway, I think what we want to do is, is approve this, this calendar for our quarterly workshops, and then the first pre-meetings for next year. So I do have a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve the schedule, budget calendar, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget calendar as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second, and we approved this budget, draft budget calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. All right, thank you. Wow, we're just charging ahead. Anybody? Okay. Next up is more meaty stuff, the financial review on, I guess, on how we got through twenty-one, twenty-two.
And I'm gonna share my screen again. Okay. Can you guys see it?
Hey, I'd like to put this on my big screen, so I'm gonna have to close my laptop, so.
And this will also be posted to the website.
Okay.
This is just a really high-level overview of it. It's the same thing that we presented at the first Budget Committee pre-meeting, so it basically follows all the lines of the budget, kind of the bottom line of it. So if you have any questions on anything that's contained in these categories, or how I got to those numbers, feel free to reach out. And I can give you a detailed overview of it. So just to dive in, property taxes, we came in at two forty-three, so we're a hundred and six percent. Revenue from collections, which I know most of us are most interested in, and so that is composed of the TLT taxes, franchise fee, business licenses, building permits, and other short-term rental fees. Short-term rental taxes came in at one point six, and building permits came in at over four hundred thousand. So of course, the building permits next year will be within the building fund. And we see a transfer out into the building fund, a portion of these for the next budget. So we're tracking well ahead there. Revenue from other agencies. You'll see we're only at eighty-nine percent. On this one, we budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand for the COVID relief fund, but we did not get the second half of that this fiscal year, so that will be reflected in next year's budget.
So you're saying that money should still be coming in?
Yes, that money will be coming in for the next fiscal year. So we got seventy-three thousand, and we'll get the second bunch. It should be next month. We've submitted everything, so we're just waiting. They're a little slow right now.
Did we, I don't remember, did we budget for that additional revenue, or is that?
Well, that's reflected under grants for a hundred and thirty, so we just carried it over into the next year.
Okay, okay, good, okay.
Yes. And then, where was I?
Money and property, uses of money.
Money and property, okay. So that's taxes. We came in well over on our property taxes. Seventeen thousand. Charges for services, this is court, and we knew we were going to be under on that. Other revenue, the other revenue is a miscellaneous, so when we have miscellaneous expenses, and it's kind of a pass-through account. So then personnel services, we came in at ninety-three percent. Materials and services, we knew we were going to be over, it's a hundred and six percent.
Why, why did we lose people? We, I know, I think we had some turnover in like Public Works, is that the reason for spending less on personnel?
Well, this is for administration.
Oh, okay.
And we're at ninety-three percent, and we did have some turnover. Then materials and services, a hundred and six. But when you consider, the auditors consider expenditures as a whole, not materials and services as a whole, so on that note, even though we came in at a hundred and six there, we're still under at ninety-five percent when you consider everything together. Sorry, I'm on the wrong screen. And then for police, we're tracking under on that as well. Everything looked good there. Building, we are under on personnel services. That was, again, turnover. We waited, we didn't get that position filled right away. And then we budgeted at the higher end of the highest end, and also budgeted, assuming curves and the highest-end health insurance, so that's the reason for that. Materials and services, we're over. Again, we knew that, that's that twelve percent surcharge that we under-budgeted on. Capital outlay, eighty-six percent. And then same with building, if you consider the whole department as a whole for expenditures, we are at sorry, seventy-seven percent, so still under there. Municipal court, personal services, ninety-four. Materials and services, eighty-one percent, so we're under there. We came in pretty close on personnel services. Again, we knew that it was due to having an hourly paid employee instead of salary, and we changed that for this fiscal year. Parks, everything looks good, seventy-eight percent on personal services. Forty-six for materials and services. Non-departmental, way under, and a good portion of that is also that COVID money that we didn't spend. And so that's something that we're gonna address this coming fiscal year for the following of what we want to do with those funds. So that'll be presented at a council meeting in the future. I've been taking seminars on that and learning all the stuff that we can do with that money, so we can make a decision about that. Water operating fund, we came in well over on water revenue, so that's good, a hundred and seven percent. Personnel services, we are at seventy-eight percent. Materials and services is doing good, at sixty-nine. Debt service, this is just the final payment for that, didn't come in until the following fiscal year. Materials and services, well-filled, we're doing good there. Let's see. Water construction, doing good there. A big portion of that is, we underestimated on our new builds, so the SDCs. Let's see, roads. We are, came in good on that, a hundred and forty percent, so, and that was, we got more franchise. Did someone have something to say? Okay. Revenue from other agencies, became a good on that, sixty thousand. Tourism promotion, oh, sorry, I'll go back to expenditures for roads. Personnel services, eighty-three percent there. Materials and services, fifty-seven, so we're tracking really good on all of that. Roads, we were well under on capital outlay, and that was due to projects that didn't get started this year. I think we talked about that during the budget process as well.
Was that the darkest?
Tourism promotion, again, that's that half of the TLT funds that go into that restricted fund. We're at a hundred and ninety-six percent there, so we're tracking well over there as well. Materials and services, thirty-three percent. Capital outlay, twenty percent. Debt service, we made all those payments that fiscal year. Park facilities, again, we're over there in revenue from the SDCs. Storm drain, same thing there with the SDCs. Public works. We were over there because Dan sold a vehicle that have written in the budget. And public safety, same thing there. We sold a vehicle, and then we purchased a vehicle, and city hall expansion. We are well under in materials and services. Doing really good there. Debt service, made all those payments, and that's it. You guys have any questions?
Okay, so are, are we paying anything any, anymore on the water treatment plant?
Yes, that is up here.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I saw that, so we're paying on that, in the visitor center.
Yes.
And the property, the Underhill Plaza, yeah.
Those are the three.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, can I ask Nina a couple of things? Can you, Nina, can you go to the very top again, that has the headings on it?
Yeah.
Perfect. I'm wondering whether for the next report or future reports, we could add another column that actually gives the dollar figure between the, the adopted budget versus the actual positive or negative number, you know, black or red or whatever, so that you can quickly look and see.
What that.
Doesn't mean a lot when it's five hundred dollars. So it'd be helpful to actually see the dollar numbers, and it also will give us a dollar number at the bottom in terms of how much it, it hopefully in future years, a surplus rather than any negatives. And then the other thing, if it's possible to have the actual spreadsheet sent to us so that we can actually take a look at it and spend some time digesting it.
Yeah, and actually, Steve, to speak to that, we had talked a lot about the reporting that I had been giving counsel. And I finished entering the budget in to Casell for this fiscal year, and I was able to make all those adjustments. So everything now will have the correct title, everything for, like, how before where it was phones, sewer, electricity, and everything looked over, all of that is adjusted. So each one shows a specific dollar amount, so you can track that. Same with personal services, under all of the benefits, I have it all mapped out to where you can see, like, this is what we budgeted for taxes, health insurance and all that. So the reporting should look a lot easier to read this year. I also created activity codes for all those projects, as you and Leila had been talking about, so we can do specialized reporting for that as well.
Well, that's great. This is really helpful, just so you know, I'm really appreciative of it. I just, especially those project codes, I think will really help us, because we are spending money on consultants and different things for different projects, so being able to attract them individually would be great.
Yeah, very helpful. Helpful for us, too, is we prepare the budget, especially for me, where I'm not having to pull from different places to figure out how much we're spending here and there, so we're really excited about this budget.
Nina, is that report you guys are talking about, the one that is always in the counselor's packet for the meetings?
No, that's just the bills for payment that goes into the consent agenda. So this is one that I, we kind of starting supplying to council once we got into Casell. And I had some formatting issues, and it was kind of difficult to read, so it wasn't happening on a regular basis, but our plan is to start doing that at the end of every month.
What is that word you're using? I, I can, it sounds like crystal or.
The consent agenda? Are you talking about?
You put it, you put it in some kind of system.
Oh, CAS-E-L-L-E.
Spell that. Okay, got it.
And that's the new financial software. So we switched over to that in October. And that has been quite the process, because I had three months in the old system, the rest in the new system, getting everything formatted correctly, and, you know, everything hitting the right GL codes. So it's definitely been a process, but we're excited for this year where everything's in one place and formatted the way we want it. It's gonna be a lot more user-friendly.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't, couldn't interpret the words. Is Casell directed more towards government, or is it just? Yes, okay, that's what I figured it probably was.
And the one that we had was for nonprofits, so, you know, we made it work, but it wasn't user-friendly at all. And it was from, like, nineteen ninety.
Ah, geez. Some of us would consider that pretty new software, but, you know.
Some would.
Just saying. Okay, so, anybody have any questions or more comments? And thank you for your suggestion on that, Steve. I'm just showing the dollar differences, because it, we look under other revenue, about six lines down, wow, eleven hundred twenty-four percent. Well, you know, it's not very much real dollars, so.
Yeah.
So anybody else have any other questions, comments, concerns, or want to discuss this more?
I do. Oh, go ahead, Catherine.
Just a point of clarification, because we have council members on here, and then we also have budget committee members. So I'm assuming that at a minimum, for the budget committee members, will receive this update in advance of our quarterly meetings for review. I don't personally, unless there's an urgent need, see a need to review it every month. I don't think that's really the focus of these meetings, so for commission, for planning commission, excuse me. Wrong commission. For budget commission, budget committee members will get this updated with the changes we just discussed in advance of quarterly meetings. And likely, the first agenda item would just be a review with highlights from you, and we'll have had time to look at it and see what questions we have in advance. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, Steve, and I guess all of you as a whole, would it be easier for you to see a line between the revenue and the expenditures and have a total? I thought you had, I thought I heard you say that, Steve, so like having here a blank line that shows the total. Is that where you were?
I think if you were able to do subheadings, that might be helpful in terms of reading. I don't know that it's imperative. I just thought a third column would be pretty easy to do. If this is just an Excel spreadsheet, or is this an actual published?
It's just an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, so you should, I mean, that'll be super easy to make another third column with with the differences, so I don't know that the subheadings are necessary. You might experiment with it when you have that free time, that's probably pretty elusive. If you do have some and thinking about it, you might just start out there and see what it looks like.
Okay, great, thank you. Chip, did you have a question?
Yes. I think for most people, showing revenue as a negative is confusing. And so you, you have expenditures as positive numbers in this spreadsheet, and revenue is negative. And so anything you can do to make regular people understand this would be helpful. I think drawing a line, as you suggested, with a subtotal on revenue and would probably help understanding.
Okay. Thanks.
Whether it's subtitles or subsections, whatever, just something to improve understanding, because I think most people don't think of revenue as a negative number.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Nina?
That's it for me, just plugging away, getting ready for the audit. We have that on the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. Looking forward to that, looking forward to just reviewing all the Casell stuff and getting kind of some clarification from them on processes, but everything's coming along really nicely.
Thank you. All right, next up is the indirect cost allocation discussion. Is Martin on again, or is this?
This is just, this is just an open discussion with Leila.
Okay. Leila, you're on.
Hey, everyone. Um, I will not show you my beautiful mug today, because I am under the weather, but I did not invite Martin today, because I wanted to have more of an informal discussion with everyone about the indirect cost method, which we discussed quite a bit during the budget process. Excuse me. And just wanted to get the conversation going with folks about whether or not we should take perhaps a more simplified approach to the process. Many of you raised concerns during, minor concerns, but some concerns about the complexity of the model, and Chip even provided an example, maybe Chip, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you could perhaps discuss the method that you shared with us, based primarily on expenditures for the indirect cost method. But I wanted to have this conversation early, because it takes many months if we did do a revision to get through that process, and so I wanted to get a bit ahead of the curve, given we have a lot of things happening at the city. So it's mostly just an informal conversation with all of you about the methods we've been using thus far, your level of comfort with those, and if y'all have any interest in pursuing a different approach, and if so, perhaps what direction you might offer staff as we move forward into the fiscal year. Because budget, it already feels like it's right around the corner. So does anyone have any thoughts about the process? I think one of the things for me that came up was the allocation as it related to specifically Judy's position. And I wanted to take a harder look at that this fiscal year. And perhaps make some adjustments to that, and then we also have the option to adjust what we projected to transfer if we find that there's any significant differences. So I just want to open up the floor to all of you, and if folks are comfortable with it, and we want to keep moving along, I'm also happy to proceed in that way, but it felt like there was enough interest in discussing it, that it made sense to bring it up now.
I, my internet connection is unstable, so I hope people can hear me. Linda Kozloski and I had a brief conversation about this this morning. I previously wrote a memo about indirect cost allocation, the philosophic underpinnings, and part of the reason I wrote that, it was back in twenty twenty-one, but I updated it recently. There's nothing wrong with FCS methodology, except that it's way too complex. For a city our size, it's totally unnecessary to have something so complex. And I looked in depth at the, at some other models that are used throughout the state to allocate indirect costs. And Warrenton, just north of this, has a fairly simple methodology that could be implemented by our staff, instead of having a consultant, instead of us requiring us to to have a consultant every budget period, and so I, I'm I'm not necessarily advocating that we adopt the Warrenton methodology, but it's illustrates how you can have a simpler approach. That can be implemented by the staff, and doesn't require a consultant every year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, but I think I also sent that memo to you earlier.
Yes, you did.
So to me, it's, it's worth looking at a less complex approach and ditching the consultant, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah, I think, I think that the attention that this issue has gotten the last couple of years, you know, because it's been so focused on the dollar amount coming out of the water fund, it's really, the conversation really hasn't been on the, the merits of an indirect method at all, or, or understanding, you know, the, the need for a indirect system. That said, if people try to understand the one we've been using, as Chip said, it's, it's unfortunately too complex to serve a good public discussion, I think, on this topic. So I'd kind of like to get us back to the basics of why we need an indirect cost methodology, and if we can have a simpler one. I don't think we lined up focused so quickly on the actual dollar amount out of any given fund, but we can, you know, hopefully rebuild some public understanding and trust in the the process we're using, because we all understand it, we can all talk about it. I think, you know, one of the problems, frankly, is that very few of us, myself included, can really embrace the, the methodology we've been using, and then explain it to folks, and if we can't explain it, you know, we can't put it all on Leila and Nina to explain it. So if we had a better understanding of it, and we're more comfortable with it, and can talk about it more convincingly, I think that would serve the public well.
Can I ask a question, Jerry, from what you just said? So I, I think I heard two things, and I want to make sure I understood. One was just echoing the simplicity. Simplicity to a point, because it still has to serve. An overly simple, overly simple model, and I've heard at least one suggestion, doesn't serve. So the, the goal is not simplicity in and of itself. The goal is for people working on this and planning, the, the people on this call, as well as the public, to have an understanding of how that cost allocation works. And to do some kind of fundamental education, like we've been doing in a lot of areas of city work lately, around why an allocation model is used. But I wasn't sure if I heard you in there also suggesting whether we have, this committee, this group, has to have of go-back-to-basics discussion about even having a cost allocation model. of go back to basics discussion about even having a cost allocation model. Or did I misunderstand you?
Yeah, no, I think we need a model. I, it's been a while since I looked at the material that, that Chip had uh sent around. So I guess I would be anxious to dig into that a little bit better. I mean, I, I think, you know, there's quick appeal to being able to use a model that is being used effectively by a relative neighbor, uh if, if, if the warranted model, you know, in all other respects measures up. Uh but I, you know, I, I, I would I just think we can get out of the mess we've been in uh fairly cleanly uh and, and in the process, re um start the conversation and get, as you say, we're doing a lot of community conversations these days, and, and uh I think while we have people's attention, this is a good time to sort of turn down the, the uh the heat on this particular issue, uh if we can get away from the, the, and you're right, we can't uh eliminate the complexity, uh but we can reduce it, I think.
Yeah. No, I'm in favor of that. I just, let, let me just finish one thing, and then I'll be done for the next round of conversation. I think um the other thing that's true, and I've said this in our last meeting we had, there is no perfect allocation model. And even coming up with one that is easier to understand does not mean internally with, within the people who are running these budgets or externally, that everybody's going to agree with it. So that's the, the agreement on the model from, you know, a hundred percent of the community is not a good goal for us. Understanding of the model is good. And then we, I think that's part of our responsibility is to make sure we think the allocation is reasonable. We're trying to design something that stands the test of time. Not, I don't like what that did to my numbers this year, and we should change the model, or I don't like a particular outcome this year. The whole point of doing these things is so you have some standard in place, so you can really do good comparisons also year to year. So so anyway, that's the finish up on that. So please go ahead. I think that was Steve.
Oh, I just had a, a quick comment. I think it's important that we reflect on where we were versus where we are. And where we were just a few years ago was kind of a swag system of estimating how many hours we spend on a particular issue. And then monetizing that by putting down a number. And I think we've done a good job in transitioning from that rudimentary system to an indirect process, which is by far and away the typical way people approach this. To me, the one reason you want to do an indirect model is so that you can really identify what the cost of service delivery actually is. If otherwise, there's no way to really do an analysis about the justification for that particular service. If you don't know what the true cost of the service is, and part of that goes to uh the effort to um to, to uh identify what level of reimbursement you want from um from the service delivery, if it actually has a private interest uh that should be paying for it. So anyway, I, I don't care about the model so much, as long as it's fair, equitable, and easy to apply. Uh, it, it, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the model that's being used. It's kind of a typical model for many jurisdictions. I haven't seen the Warrenton model, and I'm sorry, Chip, if you sent that out, I'm afraid I, I have really no recollection of it. I, um, but I would love to get it if I, if I haven't already, or you could send it to me again. But I just want to make sure that whatever we decide to do, it's reflective of a desire to identify true cost of service delivery. Uh, and that, that's really the bottom line, at least for me. Um, and allows us to identify, again, for the council specifically, to identify whether that's the kind of service we want to continue to provide for the costs that we're paying for. So that's all I wanted to say.
So Steve, this is Chip. Um, I didn't send it to you, who is not on purpose. It was just that Jerry and I had a conversation about it, and I said, hey, I'll send you what I wrote, and Linda and I this morning had a conversation, so I sent her that. And I previously uh uh had an exchange with uh either or and Nina and Leila. So I haven't excluded people on purpose. It's simply that the subject comes up, and I say, hey, I've been thinking about it, here's something. Uh, but I, I do want to add uh some experience I had from private industry. Catherine is correct that a lot of people in the community may not understand these issues and may not even care. Uh, and the same goes for other departments. Uh, in my experience, uh, no division, operating division, wants to pay for those worthless people in administration. Because nobody wants to have those costs passed on to them in their budget. You know, they want to have it, hey, send it over to sales, don't send it to manufacturing. So I, that's, that's where uh there's never going to be a methodology that everybody agrees on. It's just a, a realization that some, just to be clear, so a direct cost is something that is clearly attributable to an operation, whether it's police or public works or water or uh building. An indirect cost is one that is incurred generally uh by the whole organization, but cannot be attributed directly to one operation. Uh, the perfect example is Nina. Uh, and finance. Finance underpins everything in the organization, and yet there's no operating division or department uh to which you can stick all the financial, the costs of financial administration. So it has to be allocated among the departments. That's, that, that's why there is a need for that methodology.
I, I think, I I, I got a feeling that the, the problem is we have, there is a number or percentage that can be applied to the cost of having a water system that delivers water to my tap and having a city manager doing what the city manager does. There's some number there that is rational. And if we, the simpler, the simpler, the simpler the system we have to figure out what that number is makes most sense, because we can't just, a direct cost would be if we hand hand a wrench to Leila and say, go out and do whatever you're going to do. But I think we understand there is a value to having a city manager, and there's a value to having a, a water system. So somewhere in the middle is that number. And if we're spending all this money on a uh, on a uh consultant to cut, to tell us this elaborate system for calculating all of that, that's, that's sort of a waste of money. So the, whatever the number is, we'll arrive at it. So uh the idea is make it rational and understandable.
Uh, Chip, is that, and Jerry, is that uh Warrenton system simpler? Uh, I'm not familiar with it. I don't know what it uh, what it entails, but is it dramatically different than what we do, or?
Uh, it's well, let's start back with what we did before, which was uh, it was a finger to the wind kind of approach. And to be clear, many smaller uh municipalities just say, well, let's just hand, let's just uh put fifty percent of the general manager's uh costs on to over here. You know, there's, there's not a uh a, there's not a methodology. Uh if you look uh at more complicated, bigger cities, city, uh Portland, uh Gresham, for example. Uh, just, just to give you, and Gresham is an example, the police force in Gresham has to pick up forty percent. Uh, I can't remember the forty percent figure, whether it's forty percent of the total budget or forty percent of the administrative budget. So it's it's often a big number. For example, in Portland, the water uh utility picks up twenty-eight percent of administrative costs of all administrative costs. So it, it can be all over the map, and I agree with David. It just has to be something that is rational and uh reasonable. Uh, and so uh the Warrenton system, to put it simply, uses a proxy for um the allocation of costs, and that is using materials and services. And remember, the budget includes basically personnel, materials and services, capital outlays, maybe to oversimplify. And so materials and services, they, they're, what the assumption underlying that is that an operating division uh spends money on materials and services, they all spend money on materials and services. And so if you allocate uh indirect costs on the basis of what they're spending for materials and services, that gives you a proxy for uh a fair allocation of indirect costs. That and the, I, I sent uh Jerry and Linda, I believe, and also Nina, the the explanatory memo from April Clark, who's the financial director up at um Warrenton, and she's happy to help out. She's very helpful. Uh, and uh part of that memo, if somebody hasn't picked it up already, is that you can't always use the raw materials and services number. For example, if, if there's a big uh engineering fee one year because of something uh in the water utility, you throw that out because it's an anomaly. So it's, it's not, uh, it requires some tweaking of the materials and services. Uh, but it, the basic idea is that you already have that number. We already know the number of the materials and services that each department spends. And that to repeat, that is used as the proxy for uh allocation of indirect costs. And, and I'm happy to send, Nina, don't you, do you have what I sent out earlier, or I can send it to you and you can send it to everyone else?
I'm sure I do have it in my folder.
Okay, well, I'm going to send it to you just in case, and
Okay.
All I, all, this was, one of, one of the documents is the explanation that April Clark has. The other one is sort of this, the philosophical underpinning for uh the allocation of indirect costs.
I'll keep an eye out for it.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, Chip, if you could send that over, it'd be helpful. And one thing I think we would also need to consider being the size that we are is um the personnel perhaps being part of that discussion, because we are so small that we don't have um for example, human resources or other um types of support that most cities would have, even cities that are slightly larger than ours have far more.
Yeah.
Sorry, my mute button just went on, but other cities, even not that much bigger than ours, have far more support that um provides services that the city's administration generally tends to have. But this is a really, this is the conversation I was hoping we could have today, because I agree. Um coming in, in my first year, I relied on what we had done in the past to sort of see whether or not it will work for the future. And um I would concur with um all of the discussion that's happening today, that I think a more understandable and simplified model would be beneficial. Um, I'm agnostic in terms of what the number looks like, so long as that it reflects um what our sort of effort and resources are that are allocated towards it. But I think having something um that's that staff can produce um would be beneficial for a number of, of reasons. So um this is really helpful feedback.
So Leila, um, in terms of what's I'm mindful of the, a comment we started with, which is if we're going to make a change, there's a certain amount of time and lead time the city staff would need to use that um in order to get ready for next year. So if we were to um if we were just thinking how we proceed forward from this conversation, if we took the, the Warrenton example plus the the learning we've had from listening to each other in this conversation this morning, is it reasonable then to just make that one of our goals for the next meeting, October twenty-fifth, to come in and have a couple of models to look at, to suggest change and have some debate about it um and figure on or decide what the model will be for next year? Does an October meeting give you the time then to be able to implement that for next year?
Yeah, exactly. Um, yes, I hope so. I think certainly, starting with um we could at least run one model, looking at the Warrenton approach, um and then perhaps offer some variations on that, some sensitivity analysis as well, but that seems perfectly reasonable. Um which is why I wanted to have the conversation early, because then that way we can be prepared. Um, if there are changes or other additions, um, we can have another go at it before we start the budgeting process for next year.
Yes, Jim.
No, I, I, I totally agree that um being able to look at a model or two models in comparison to what we do now is imperative. I just are we, are we still in the same ballpark? I think everybody's experiences that live, the people that live in Manzanita, some this is their only experience, but for many, many they don't understand that, like, I think they're, in, in talking to people in the community, there are lots of people who do not understand that the water system is not a standalone. Um, and, and they come from places where the water supply and, and system and infrastructure is all supported by itself, and we don't have that here. So I think we need to I, I don't know, I think that general understanding isn't necessarily the if we simplify it, I think that would be really good. But simplifying it simp, just for the purpose of simplifying it doesn't mean anything if it's not um more saleable. I don't know if that's what I want to say, but you know, when I, to, to to get it to the community to where they, they understand better what we're trying to do.
Anybody else have any other thoughts on this? Saleable is, another term for that is understandable.
So that's a better word, yes.
Yeah. So do you have anything more you would like to add, Leila?
No, um, this has been very helpful, and I think um kind of starting with, I think, just to make sure I'm, I've heard everyone think we should take a look at and I did look at Chip's memo um previously about the Warrenton model, so I think we start there. Uh, staff will work on at least developing that option, perhaps adding um an additional option to that. And then be prepared to discuss that with the committee in October for additional feedback. Um, and then we can go from there. So that's the consensus of the group, then um we will proceed with that. And I think, Chip, please do send over the the memo, and we will ship that out to the rest of the committee. And I would also welcome the committee to email me individually with any thoughts or suggestions, um, once you've had a chance to digest it a little more fully. Um so that that can inform uh what we prepare uh for October. But this is great direction, and um I'm in concurrence with um with the approach.
Excellent.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else we need to bring up, particularly Leila? You need to bring up anything more to this uh August gathering?
Um, not at this time. If there are specific items that the committee, um, this was sort of the top of the list for me. I'm very excited to share the new uh budget um format that, that Nina's been working so hard on, so that will be ready for us ne- uh next time as well. If there are other topics that folks would like to discuss at the upcoming meeting, um feel free to mention that now, or reach out to staff between now and uh the meeting, but um we're looking forward to just coordinating with you guys more frequently and um staying on top of our uh expenditures, excuse me, um, as we move forward.
Anything else? Okay, I, looks like we can wrap it up, but I'll entertain a motion to uh order Leila to go back to bed and get some sleep. Favor say aye.
Aye.
You have your marching orders.
Duly noted, sir.
With, with that, we can adjourn the meeting, and uh thank you, everybody, for participating, and we'll see you all again on October twenty-fifth, if not sooner, wandering around town.
Thanks, everyone.
Go forth and do good work. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.